This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, I believe it's June 4th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on the webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until June 30th, 2027, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or a public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann.
Peg Coniff. Here. Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Felicia Jatzick. Here. JP Kuzinski. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
Okay, thank you. You can join us for a moment of silence or the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For work.
Okay, it looks like we have two sets of minutes. Is that correct, Mary Ann?
Yes. May 7th and 21st.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 7th and May 21st unless anybody has instructions. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the minutes of May 7th and 21st? Seeing none, uh, Mary Ann. Roll call.
Yes, I want to see ready. Okay. Peg Coniff.
Um, I approved it on May 7th, but I abstained from May 21st.
Okay. Connie Denham.
Aye for both.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatzick.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye for both.
Tom Peak.
I'm gonna have to abstain from May 7th, but I'll vote aye on the other one.
Brad Riley.
Aye for both.
Tamara Smith.
Aye for both.
JT Terrell.
Okay, so now is the time for the public to address the council on any matter that's not on our public hearing. You will have three minutes and address the council. Please state your name and address for the record so we can record that. Can you do my three minutes?
Thank you. I have 22 seconds, 20, 20, 20 minutes.
Felicia Jatzick.
20 percent.
I wanted to just...
Thank you. That's better. I just wanted to make a quick announcement. We're going to do a honor the flag ceremony on Wednesday, the 11th, in front of the pond at 6 o'clock, and I was hoping everybody would join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Thomas Trout, Keddie Street, East Hampton. Before I begin, I just want to thank all of you on the city council for doing what you do, coming in here after long hours of work, probably at another job or whatever, and having to deal with those people in the public. Thank you for all the work you do. We have a world-class rail trail system that runs through East Hampton that is used by thousands of people weekly, and it's a main transportation and recreation system for those who live here, and it's about to get longer, which will bring more bicyclists into downtown. Bicyclists in this area depend on the rail trail system for transportation, recreation, and healthy activity. It's our Interstate 91. And for that reason, it's important to maintain the trail, and I fully support the temporary closures, as is happening now, to do the work. But I'm here to talk about how that closure happens. This closure has offered zero alternative routes or detour support whatsoever. Imagine if you shut down Route 10 and offered no detour for people using it. All the people using the rail trail have offered, have been offered no alternative route options, like we don't even exist. How was this decision made? Both, both major sections were closed at once. There's one whole section that hasn't, it hasn't, had no work over two weeks. This has inconvenienced a lot of, a lot of people, and there's been no plan for any other alternative routes. Bicycles are traffic. There is zero mention of bicycles in the East Hampton, East Hampton Traffic Rules and Orders document. Bicycles exist in another document and 179 paid city ordinances, sitting there like a lost sock in the laundry room. Bicycles are traffic. Please migrate the section on bicycles and city ordinances to traffic rules and orders, because when you do that, it's the beginning of taking complete streets policies and bicyclists seriously and respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eileen Royzman, and I live at 17 Adams Street. I moved here from Amherst in August of 2021 because I couldn't afford to live there anymore. The rental market was already getting tight, and I was about to accept a friend's offer to move into her house temporarily when I found a tiny quirky apartment on the third floor of an old house. Even though I had to get rid of a lot of stuff because it wouldn't fit, I felt very fortunate to find an affordable place, especially since my daughter lives in East Hampton and I wanted to be close to her. At that time, the building was in the process of being sold from one individual to another. The new owner seemed to be a decent person, and over the next three years, his rent increases were minimal. However, he was incapable of properly managing the building, and last fall, a few tenants found out in a roundabout way that he was selling to Hurricane Properties, an out-of-state real estate investment company whose sole purpose is to maximize profit for investors. Around the time of that transition, some of us talked about forming a tenants association, and when the new owners took over in April, we stepped up our efforts. After a flurry of repairs in April and May, Hurricane notified all the tenants that rent would increase starting July 1st and offered month-to-month leases. For most of us, the increase is around 30%, and for one tenant, it's more than 50%. As the tenants association, we responded with a letter requesting negotiation, and in response, they said they would stagger the increase between July 1st and January 1st, still totaling the same unreasonable amount. A few of the tenants can handle such an increase reluctantly, but for some tenants, this will mean not being able to eat or pay other bills, or it will force them out, potentially by eviction. This is a small eight-unit building with only 10 tenants. A couple of tenants are disabled. One is a single parent with a young child. As I'm sure everyone here knows, this is not the only building in East Hampton that's been purchased by a predatory property investment company, and we're not the only tenants facing exorbitant rent increases. As we all know, there's a housing crisis here and everywhere. The situation is stressful and disruptive. It seriously affects people's quality of life and damages community cohesiveness. As residents, we are invested in this community. We work here, we shop here, we have family and social connections here. The companies buying properties are not investing in the community. They are taking advantage of a tight housing market to line their own pockets. It should go without saying, but I'll say it anyway, housing is a basic human right. Making a profit is not. I'm asking the city council to pay attention to the needs of residents and put protections in place so that we can afford to live here and maintain our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Nancy Dorian, and I live at 22 Nashwannick Street. I was here when you guys voted on the resolution to pass the cap on rents, to send it up to the state, and I really appreciate that. I just recently spoke at an event that got in front of a lot of the legislators to also pass for that. Just wanted to update you a little bit about what's going on with us. We were able to get our landlords to come down $100, and we asked for some other things like going back to our original rent and then maybe only doing 4% increases over the next four years. We wanted to be able to keep our cats, you know, things like this, basic stuff. Have a real maintenance company, which we don't have right now. It's very dangerous in the winter, and they came back saying we could have our cats and no to everything else. So we're still fighting, $100 is not enough. We had a 35% increase. Mine was $400. Now they're advertising them, they were advertising them for 15, now, then 18, now they're, they have it at 20, you know, 20, 200, $2,000. You know, I was originally at $1,150. So same thing with my new neighbors. It's happening again, and I've heard of another place that's local that's happening. And so we're just hoping to all get together and get some attention here and maybe form a tenants union, uh, union, like East Hampton, um, tenants association, because it's really needed, and we really appreciate you backing us up on this. So I'll be here backing up other people that this is happening to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bree Ross. I also live on 17 Adams Street in the same building as Eileen. I'm the tenant she was talking about that won't be able to afford to eat or pay my bills with this rent increase. I already work with around $100 a week to be able to eat, and my rent is gonna go up around $260. And I, on top of that, I suffer from PTSD. I've been living in East Hampton. This is the first time I've been able to live alone and afford it and be able to heal from a lot of the stuff that I've had to deal with, and this has been really destabilizing. And I really think that people shouldn't be having to worry about if they can eat whenever they live in, in their home, in someplace that's been their home for such a long time. And, uh, thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public speak? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none, we still have about three minutes before we open up our public hearing, so we don't have any items for immediate attention. Do any councilors have any announcements they would like to make? Um, I think, uh, Counselor Jatzick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let everyone know that this Saturday is going to be the June Art Walk in East Hampton, and the East Hampton City Arts Group is also premiering a new event called Art in the Garden, which will be featuring a number of different garden spaces in the city along with art and music. So I encourage everyone to come out for that this Saturday.
Thank you. And Counselor Kuzinski.
Counselor Jatzick, thank you. I was just gonna add the only, to the Art in the Garden, it's a 2 to 5, 2 to 5 p.m. event, and, uh, so that is this Saturday, 2 to 5, and there is a, at the Art Walk is 4 to 7, and there is a band that's playing in the promenade at Nashwannick Pond from 3 to 6. So those are great events, and I also normally don't plug another community, but I'm going to today, so please bear with me. Hadley is having their Asparagus Festival this weekend, and I think that's a great event. We all, well, many of us love asparagus here in the valley. It is the best in the world, as far as we're concerned, and we'd like to promote that, and I think it's just great. So in the afternoon on Saturday in Hadley at the Hadley Town Commons.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Anybody else? Uh, I would just say, especially in lieu of the comments around rent, I am putting together the Rent Control Ad Hoc Committee. We're starting to fill up the spaces. I would say if you are interested, especially tenants, sending me an email, sderby@easthampton.gov would be the best way to put your name on that list, and we should have a full committee. I'm thinking potentially by our next meeting. So, uh, thank you for all the people that have volunteered so far. And I think with that, we're in a good shape to get this public hearing started. Counselor Peak, you wanna open it for us?
Sure, I'd make a motion to open the public hearing.
So much.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mary Ann.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatzick.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Pass.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell. Peg Coniff.
You can come back and I'll abstain. Abstain.
JP Kuzinski.
Abstain.
Okay.
Okay, so our public hearing is now open at 6:15, and I will pass the torch to Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, we met last week to take our final votes on the budget. We voted to approve this budget 2 to 1. It's a, uh, normally, I've sometimes had like a long statement to say about the budget. I, I, I don't know that I necessarily have a, a lot to say. It's, um, it's a, it's a pretty large, uh, budget, but I, in terms of just a growth percent compared to a lot of what we're used to, um, but if you actually look through it, uh, there's not a lot of what I would describe as, um, you know, discretionary spending. Nearly all of the increases that we're seeing on the salary side are a result of contractually obligated salary increases due to our various union contracts, so that's not really something that we're in a position to negotiate. When it comes to the, the non-salary items, most of the things that have increased in cost have increased as a result of inflation. So again, uh, it's not clear to me that there is a lot of places where we can make cuts. One thing that sparked a good deal of, of conversation in the course of our, uh, meeting was that there is a pretty large amount of money, $4 million, that's being moved from general stabilization into the budget. I think that, it's, uh, I, I hope that maybe folks have had a chance to, because it's, sort of recapping this entire conversation is a little bit tricky, it's complicated stuff, but, but, you know, the, the short version of it is that the mayor and the mayor's finance team are, are making a move to try and move us sort of into a place where, um, our reserves are sort of more in line with what the Department of Local Services, pardon, the State Treasury Department, uh, is, is wanting to see. We have a lot more reserves than most places, um, and also is looking to move us into a place where perhaps the starting year budgets are a bit more robust, um, and so we have less year-end sort of free cash requests, um, but we also have less year-end free cash, which is something that I've advocated for, and I know that some of you have as well. So I think that, um, that, you know, a lot of ways makes sense. The, uh, we, we, uh, let me see, where do we go from there? I think one of the other points of, of contention that we'll, we'll have to discuss is that there are a number of, of part-time workers who have had their, um, their, their, their hours reduced. That was something that had happened prior to this budget, but this budget sort of budgets that amount for those people going forward, which is something that we, we discussed at length. I believe that one thing that we'll, at some point, have to discuss is that we did receive an email from some of those employees asking us to continue this hearing until the next meeting, uh, because they believe that there's a chance of them finding some solution, but that might lead to slightly different budget numbers. Just as a reminder to everybody, uh, as frustrating as this can sometimes be, uh, we as a city council, in our very, very strong mayor form of city government, do not have the ability to reallocate funds. We can pressure the city to, to make certain choices, but at the end of the day, we can only cut. And where we cut, we do not get to choose where those cuts go, they just end up in the, sort of, general fund. That's not the way it is in every city, but that is the way that it is in East Hampton. We all may have our own feelings about that, but that is just how the charter currently works. And so I think that the big thing that I took away from this budget is that although, there, there's the, I think just after, having been through years of having large quantities of reserves, the idea of moving into a different structure does make, I think, me and probably some other people a little bit nervous. The only way to deal with that would be to, uh, make some substantial cuts, and it was not clear to me that there are places to make said cuts. So, um, I think that in light of that, what we had voted 2 to 1 to do was to move forward with this budget with the knowledge that, um, you know, if the city continues its current level of sort of strength in revenue, then it, we're probably fine, but if we, um, if we do hit like a recession that affects our revenues in a major way, um, we maybe won't have as much cushion to deal with that as, uh, we potentially would have, but, um, yeah, I think that's, that's where I would start with that and see if people, I, I would say the other thing is that if anyone has any cuts they would like to propose, um, now is, unless we continue the hearing, now is sort of your last opportunity to, to propose them, so. That's my initial statement.
Thanks, Counselor Peak, and I'll go to other councilors now, and Counselor Riley, since you have your hand up, and then I'll go to members of finance.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so, you know, my question, I, I know typically we, we wait to hear about committee reports at the end of the meeting, but because this is connected to the budget, would the person who voted no on moving the budget forward, would they be comfortable right now offering a sort of dissenting analysis of why they voted no?
I'm, I'm sure that we would get, we'll get there. It looks like Counselor Coniff has her hand up first, and then Counselor Denham, would you like to follow up after that? Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Counselor Coniff.
So, um, I, I, along with Counselor Peak, approved the budget as presented, um, but the, the email that we received today relative to, uh, ongoing union discussions with the part-time employees who had their hours cut is exactly what should happen for that group, and I'm glad to see that that is ongoing and happening because that's how this gets resolved. We can, we can worry about it and, and feel bad about it forever, but we are ill-equipped to add money to that budget, um, and I, I'm very heartened to see the union stepping up and working with those employees, and if that is the direction that they are going in, I am, I am all for delaying this vote until, uh, two weeks, when we can get the answer to that, the resolution to that, and any reconfiguring of budget money that may be the result of the change to that. I just think that is going to always be a problem if we don't give them the chance right now to continue to review it.
Thank you, Counselor Coniff. Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I, um, I, I did want to spend quite a bit of time today talking about, um, kind of my concerns about this budget and the rationale for the, the various cuts to those individuals, and in fact, I actually invited several of the, or all of the, um, department heads to come. I actually can't see in the room, so I'm, I'm not sure that they're, if they're here. I see our veterans, um, um, coordinator here, Thomas Garrick, but I don't know if other people are in the room.
Yes, we've got a lot of them.
Yeah, they are. So, you know, if, if it's okay, I, I would still like to invite some of the individual department heads to, to come forward because I, I do have some questions for them, because I think that this is not just these cuts to salary or time to individuals, has a larger impact, um, for the city, and I think it also has an impact on who we are as a, as a community and, and what we as a council stand for. So if, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I'd like to, to invite a couple of the directors up to, to speak.
That, that is, that is okay with me.
Point of order. I just wanted to ask everyone, can you hear the folks online very clearly? Okay, good. Thank you.
So I have no problem with that, Counselor Denham.
Just wanted to be sure you were heard, Counselor Denham.
Okay, great. So some of the rationale for the cuts was to right-size, um, uh, departments and kind of pull into line kind of the amount of hours that people are working, so there's some more consistency. But, um, so that was one of the, um, the, kind of the rationale that was provided, and, and that's completely fair, but is, is Chief, is Chief Norris in the room?
Yes, he is, I believe. Yep. And he's making his way to the podium.
Awesome.
Good evening.
Hi, Chief Norris, thank you so much. First thing I want to say is just, I, I want to acknowledge that, um, I appreciate everything that you do for the city and everything that your department does, and, um, so I want to just acknowledge that. In terms of, you have an employee who, um, has had her hours reduced, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And can you share with us what, uh, her role is for your department?
Yeah, so, um, our office manager oversees a lot of the day-to-day oversight of the administrative, administrative operations of the department. A lot of it includes, um, setting up the procurement of supplies for both fire and EMS. It involves scheduling tasks for fire prevention activities for both East Hampton and the town of Southampton, now that we have the joint inspector positions. It involves oversight of the EMS budget and villain, uh, both for the city of East Hampton, the contract we have with the town of West Hampton, um, that all comes through the Regional Dispatch Center as well, and then obviously one of the, um, day-to-day functions of scheduling and payroll, checking the day-to-day payroll, making sure all the codes are correct, and making sure all the contractual obligations are met for, um, payment for employees are some of the highlights.
Great. And, um, does this, does this individual, um, is the allotted time currently that she has, is that more than, is that too much time that she has, or will this cut in, um, or will this cut actually impact her ability to be efficient in her job and, and be able to get all the work done?
Currently, that employee actually stays over hours to meet some of the deadline and tasks associated with the responsibilities that I just outlined.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And, you know, I know that the fire department and your staff, you're a pretty tight-knit crew, right? Is this the only individual who is having their hours decreased?
This is the only individual in our organization that is having a reduction in hours.
And do you think that will have an impact on morale?
I don't want to speak for the entire personnel of our organization. Surely in terms of the day-to-day oversight and operations, um, it's gonna have a negative impact trying to meet the current demand, uh, all the responsibilities I outlined earlier.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you, Chief Norris.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Is, is Chief Alexander in the room?
He is. He's making his way to the podium.
Awesome.
Evening, councilors. Evening, Counselor Denham.
Hi, Chief Alexander, good to see you. Again, I just want to start off by saying I appreciate everything you do for the city, and, um, I appreciate everything your department does. You also have an employee who has their hours being reduced, is that correct?
Yes, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's the largest cut in hours of, of all the eight employees.
Right. And I think that amount actually is around $12,000 of income that that one individual is losing. Can you tell me a little bit about what she does for your department?
So essentially, our office, office manager is like the office manager of the fire department in a sense. She does the job of three people. She is, accounts receivable, accounts payable, all detailed billing goes through her. All detailed billing goes through her, uh, and especially over the last, let's say, year and a half. Um, our dispatch center regionalized with Southampton and is now in charge of essentially four, uh, separate departments, two police, two fire. And with that is a large amount luckily comes from grant funding. Um, and our office manager, she spends so much time between, uh, keeping up to make sure everything's in line with the grant to, uh, any billing and oversight of that. Um, it, it's quite a large list of tasks that she's taken on, especially in the last couple of years.
Hmm, and if, if she had a reduction in hours, is that going to impact, um, the efficiency of your office and your department?
Without a doubt. Uh, like I had said, I mean, she really does the job of three individuals. Um, she really should have an assistant. Um, like the fire chief said, she works late hours. I get calls on the weekends that she's working from home just to keep up with what's already on her plate.
Okay, great. And, um, would you say, and I know that, that Chief Norris didn't want to speak for everybody, but do you think that this would have, her reduction in, in hours would have an impact on morale at your department?
So, again, without speaking for individual officers, absolutely it would. Uh, one of her main priorities is detailed billing and making sure our officers are paid on time. And trust me, if, if our officers are seeing their pay being messed with, then absolutely that's gonna hurt morale.
Sure. And do you also have a social worker that works in your department?
Yes, uh, we have a co-responder, uh, that is full-time with our department.
Yep. And how many hours does she work, do you know?
Well, she's a full-time employee, um, but again, like, uh, like our office manager, our officers 24/7. If we are, we've woken her up in the middle of the night, uh, to ask her questions or, or seek guidance, whether it be for a community member or after a, uh, critical event that we felt our officers needed to, uh, talk to her to, uh, you know, decompress from a certain call. Um, she is without a doubt on-call with us 24/7, uh, and, and works much more than 40 hours she's allotted.
Great. So it's full-time, is that 40 hours or 37.5?
Um, so I know she's present at least 40 hours a week. I am not a hundred percent sure on what she is actually paid. Um, but she is at a minimum present for 40 hours a week.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Is our, is our health director here?
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Good evening, councilors.
Hello.
Good evening, Councilor Denham.
Hi, good to see you. Sorry, I, the, I, the screen takes a little bit of time to, to transfer, so I didn't even realize you were standing. Um, again, just want you to know how much I appreciate you and, and everything you do for the city. I know that you are new in this role, um, and, um, yeah, just want to acknowledge that, you know, appreciate you. Um, you have an employee who has, uh, hours reduced, the soc- our social worker for the city, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And do you know what her new hours are?
I believe it is from thirty-
Total hours?
Thirty-six, which is currently down to 34.
Thirty-four, great. And how many, um, how many positions are in your office you oversee?
I oversee-
Work that are budgeted for?
Thank you. Five.
Five. And do you have any open positions at this time?
We do, yes.
Yeah, and how many positions are open?
There are currently two open positions.
Great. So a reduction of her hours plus having two open positions, that would have an impact on the efficiency of the, the services that you could provide to the city, correct?
You are correct, yes.
Yep, all right, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, our veterans, uh, Tom, are you available? Are you there?
He's online.
He's online.
He's online. Yep, no, I see he's online, but, uh, Tom, can you hear me?
He is muted.
Yeah.
Tom, if you can hear us, can you unmute? He might not be.
Okay.
There right now.
I do see it's yellow and not something else. Uh, okay, great. Um, is our, um, Director of DPW in the room?
Yes.
Awesome.
Good evening, councilors. Councilor Denham.
Hi, Director Nudelman, how are you today?
Well.
Good, good. Good to see you. Again, like everything, appreciate all the work that you do for the city and I appreciate your time, uh, this evening. A quick question for you. Um, one of the things that we had talked about was, um, uh, the, the pay raise that you had received for the city. And part of that, uh, I think had to do with the amount of work that you're taking on, et cetera. Would you say that's correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, it is correct.
Yep, right. So you, you've taken on some more responsibilities and therefore you have, um, uh, been compensated accordingly. Um, and have any of your office responsibilities, not yours per se, but your department's responsibilities shifted to the, um, the, oh, oh, actually, sorry, one second. Uh, so those responsibilities that you have taken on, can you tell me what those responsibilities are?
We've added, uh, one, about one and a half full-time employees to the DPW. We've taken on the management of the transition to fleet, uh, enterprise fleet for electric and hybrid vehicles. We're taking on the maintenance of the rail trail as that comes to the DPW over, in kind of in stages over the next couple of fiscal years.
Hmm, good. And the rail trail, did that come from another department or was that just, that just was assigned to you?
Maintenance of the trail has previously been handled by the Friends of the Rail Trail Committee. And as the trail has aged, it's beginning to require a higher amount of maintenance and is a real driver for the city. So I'm actually, I'm really looking forward to that coming to DPW so we can kind of-
Yeah, that's great.
Take care of it a little bit of a strong-
And you're, sorry, you're just a little bit garbled for me. Um, who did you say that came from?
The Friends of the Rail Trail Committee.
Okay, Friends of the Rail Trail Committee, great. Um, perfect. And can you, uh, tell me, did any responsibilities that were in your department move to the collections?
In what fiscal year?
Uh, for this coming fiscal year or for the last fiscal year?
No.
So your office did not shift responsibility of ticketing to collections?
Ticketing? What kind of ticketing would you be referring to? We don't issue any tickets.
Um, so my understanding was responsibility for tickets from the police department, et cetera, were moved to collections, is that correct?
No, we've never, I, in my tenure as Director since 2020, I've never dealt with any type of citation or anything being issued by the police department being paid in the Department of Public Works.
Great. So that's confusing. So during the finance meeting, it was brought up that the collections is now responsible for that and it came from DPW is not accurate?
My knowledge, no.
Okay.
We have-
Thank you very much. Yep. Uh, great. Thank you, thank you so much for your time.
Do you want to make that clarification?
Appreciate it. Is our, uh, collections department head in the room?
It doesn't look like it, but it looks like, um-
Mike Owens.
Mike Owens is coming up.
Counselors, good evening. Councilor Denham, Michael Owens here.
Hi, hi, how are you? Is Lori not here today?
I don't see Lori here in the room, but I can clarify the situation you were discussing with Greg.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Can you clarify what I was just asking?
Uh, Assistant Director, Assistant Treasurer, the person that works with me.
Hmm.
And, uh, primarily does online banking and payroll, was also responsible for processing parking tickets. Uh, we've, we've both taken on additional responsibilities because the treasurer's position is vacant at this time.
Hmm.
And the processing of those parking tickets went to the collector's office.
Okay, they did go to the collector's office. Okay, great.
Yes, the Assistant Treasurer does no longer handle those. They went from Assistant Treasurer across the hall to Collector.
Okay, great, thank you. So she has assumed more responsibility and the collector has also, uh, taken a pay decrease. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Great, great.
No, no, no one's taken a, uh, sorry, no one's taken a pay decrease.
Uh, not, sorry, not a pay dec- uh, a, uh, reduction of hours.
No, that's not right. The Assistant, the Assistant Treasurer is not getting a reduction in hours. Uh, part of her duties was to process parking tickets. When people came into the, into this building, 50-Pace, and, and wanted to pay a parking ticket, they would go see the Assistant Treasurer. Uh, both the Assistant Treasurer and, uh, myself have taken on additional duties because the treasurer's, uh, position is vacant. Uh, it made, made a lot of sense for this to go across the hall to the Collector, uh, folks that regularly collect cash or payments on behalf of the city.
Mayor, would you like to-
Yep.
Yes, first of all, I believe that we're violating open meeting law and I will be filing, filing a cease and desist with ASME as they're bringing department heads who are on management side and they are being questioned, if not interrogated, without prior notice to the Collector, who is, is now a department head. And when she was Assistant Collector, until when she made, uh, she got the job for Tax Collector, received an increase of over $10,000. She is a salary department head and often works more than a typical employee who is in the union. Now, I can't say any, I cannot say anything more because I am at a negotiation table and I find this insulting with respect to Councilor Denham. But we have now spent quite a few times, the, these questions are not directed to individual departments as their departments are being reviewed under budget process. There was no suspension of the rules to carry out this public hearing the way it is. And none of my department heads had any heads-up of this. They also are not in right now negotiations, but very well could be in negotiations as we go further. Impact bargaining requires three negotiation sessions. We are on one. We have two more sessions, um, scheduled on the 11th, but there is a chance that the union organizer cannot be there, so the second would be on the 18th. The third will be after the 18th. I, I really thank, um, Councilor Riley for just quickly mentioning, you know, that this might happen. And I understand it is the right of City Council to do this. But the matter, this matter is clearly worthy of an open meeting law violation. And also, under our own charter and rules, if there are specific questions such as these that are going to be asked by City Council to department heads, there is a seven-day period to give them the ability to prepare and answer the questions. And I maintain that the level of questioning here is beyond the budget hearing, public hearing that is happening. Not saying that they can't be asked, I'm not trying to like move anything, but, you know, I mean, the DPW Director, Director does not know what happens on the financial side of the House and would have no idea of how responsibilities have changed between Tax Collector, Assistant Treasurer, with the Assistant Treasurer and the procurement officer having a side agreement with the union for those extra responsibilities, as would be for any member of that union, a side agreement on top of their base work schedule as negotiated if there were additional responsibilities. And there is no, and now I can't say another word about it because I'm going back to the negotiation table in, in good faith, clean hands. And I have to look across the table to members of the union who, I just don't know what to say. And then I want to bring in one of the department heads to help figure this all out after this happened? You want to talk about morale? I'm, I'm just, I do, I asked, the city will be pursuing a cease and desist on, at the negotiation table and will file an open meeting law regulation to have the AG review this. I, I feel it's totally inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Denham, I think if, um, before you respond, um, I think that in the spirit of us being able to, to move forward here, I think it makes sense. If you have, um, a statement that you would like to make around the reduction in hours, uh, et cetera, I think that's perfectly acceptable. I think that probably if you have questions specifically around budgetary items, again, I think that's perfectly acceptable. I think, um, but we should be careful about, you know, using our, our power of questioning to veer off of the topic at hand to make sure that we stay within the confines. Um, and, and so, uh, you know, I, I think that that's probably the, the direction we should, we should start moving. Um, but I, I'm-
Sure, absolutely. I, yep, absolutely. I requested that, um, the directors be invited to this and I was given the okay. Um, you know, I am not asking anything that was not said or mentioned in the meeting and I was just asking for clarification. So everything that I am asking was at some point brought up or discussed in those meetings where I asked for that clarification. So this is nothing new.
Okay.
This is absolutely nothing new. Now, in terms of the situation with the particular budget and why I am opposed to this, um, I do believe that our, uh, ASME, uh, employees were, in fact, uh, are being unfairly treated. And we have what, um, in the, um, unclassified, um, budget, we have an overage of $64,000. Now, the individuals who were cut, the ASME workers who were cut amounts to $24,000 roughly dollars that they were cut. Now, if you look at the amount of money that our directors rightfully, rightfully received, I'm not disputing that, rightfully received between 3% and 4% increases to their bu- to their salaries. Now, that total, if my math is correct, equals about $27,000. Now, this is a transfer of wealth from our lowest-paid employees to our highest-paid employees. And I think that is incredibly problematic. And everything that I have asked today was, was information that was presented at the budget hearing meetings. And so I'm not asking anything that was not already asked and this was just merely a, a point of clarification. So I do not support this. I think that we should, um, not be voting on this, this evening. And I think that we should allow the, the process to move forward with them to do those things. But I wanted to highlight the points that came up in those meetings that I think that there are members of our, um, that members of our, uh, staffs who have been unfairly treated and I don't think this is okay. This has been a transfer of wealth from one group of people to another and it's unacceptable.
Okay. Do, uh, any other councilors want to wait? Councilor Kuzensky.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think first I should speak to our ability to hold our meetings and our hearing according to our rules, according to our situation, and ask whatever questions are appropriate. What I'm hearing is that a counselor brought a subject up, asked department heads questions, uh, before the public, questions in fact that, about issues that have, were addressed at the finance committee meeting, um, I understand. So basically, we're following our regular rules and our proceedings. Although the administration is certainly free to file whatever questions they have, I don't think they should be interfering with the council process. This is a council. It is our process. It is the public's business. I think we should proceed to deal with the public's business. So I'm very comfortable proceeding under our normal, regular process. I would hope to be able to work with the administration on whatever questions and issues and with our unions and with the respect of our citizens because I think we all respect our employees and the hard effort that the people who work for this city provide. Everyone, including our mayor. So let's work together as best we can to resolve whatever there is to deal with. I for one am not prepared to vote on any budget while there are questions like these before us. I would ask my fellow counselors to consider that as they give, give thought to the matter.
Councilor Riley?
You know, I, I agree with Councilor Kuzinski that I think this warrants, suspending the vote on the budget until the next meeting, until the eighteenth. What I do want to caution the city on and, and just, you know, for the public is whatever this solution looks like, it needs to be done by the eighteenth. We can't do this every year where we come up to the final minute and then there is some sort of contentious issue that happens at a budget hearing. These things should have been talked about and resolved long before, you know, receiving an email about this issue the morning of the vote. I obviously am in support of union negotiations and I want to find an amicable way forward. With that being said, the mayor has the ultimate decision on what that final number looks like and, and, and that's final. You know, I don't think any of us are in the position where we're suggesting a reduction in the budget. In, in fact, we would want to, if anything, increase it to make sure that everybody gets paid what they're deserved. But if the mayor does not agree to that, then, then that, that is what it is. And we have to, we have to be okay with that. You know, the other piece is, you know, that there is just a troubling trend in the United States where levels of government just haphazardly don't engage in the bu- budget process exactly as it's supposed to be engaged in. And this is out of control at the federal level to the point that people have lost their jobs, that there are entire sections of the government that are closing down. And we even see conversations at the state level now in Massachusetts and across the country where states are not getting the job done when it's supposed to be done. That being said, it is very clear in our governmental rules that the budget needs to be passed before the end of June every single year. And that's a full stop, there's no questions about it. There's no continuing resolutions. We can't just print money like the federal government does and just say that the problems go away. We have very real financial problems in East Hampton that need to be dealt with and that need to be done before the end of June every year. If we don't do that, then the government shuts down and everybody goes home. I don't want to see that happen. And I just feel my entire time on this council has been marred by these sorts of controversies that pop up at the last minute. Whether that's political or not, I'm not going to, to say just that we need to get this done by the eighteenth. What I don't want is the eighteenth comes around and everybody says, we're not quite there yet. And then we're scheduling a meeting on June thirtieth to pass the budget. That's not, that's not good. We need to be the wall of accountability and transparency within the United States that says that local governments will do what they are constitutionally required to do within the timeframe that they are required to do it. If we don't do that as a standard practice, then we might as well just flush the entire democratic system down the toilet because that's it. It's, it's literally us. There's nobody else above us that is going to engage in accountability and transparency and decency at the state level and it's even worse when you go up higher. So I understand what the mayor is saying. I understand what Councilor Denham is saying. But we need to do this the correct way. I will not vote on anything past the eighteenth. So the eighteenth is the deadline. I am prepared to vote on the budget on the eighteenth. If we don't have a solution then, then I'm not voting to make any more extensions because on principle alone, we need to be fiscally responsible and get things done when we're supposed to. So I know that that is, um, tough medicine coming from me where I'm usually wanting to do the most humane thing and do whatever it takes to make sure that everybody's needs are met. But I have to separate who I am as a human being and the level of empathy that I have with the actual job of a city counselor. And the most important thing that we do when we run for office is pass the budget. Everything else is relative. We can do resolutions, we can do ordinances, we can be flexible in the types of ways that we want to govern our community. The budget is not one of those processes. So, um, I apologize for being stern and sort of dystopian with the way that the world is, but it, it is what it is. And I, I want to see this get done the correct way. So, um, please to all of the stakeholders involved, be decent to one another, listen, engage in the process and let's get this done by the eighteenth, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Riley. Councilor Denham, I see your hand.
Great, um, thank you for those comments, uh, Councilor Riley. And I believe that this is all about decency. I think this is about how we as a city treat our employees. And I don't think it's fair that eight employees, six employees, eight employees, two, there's two department heads as well, who've had their, um, hours reduced. And, um, if this is about financial kind of fiscal responsibility, then I don't think that that responsibility falls on eight people to take a reduction in, in pay, a, a reduction in time which impacts their livelihood, which impacts their retirement, um, et cetera. And this is not out of the norm for us. We stood up for the, um, school, uh, teachers just a few years ago and we went to bat for them. And I think that this is not anything that is any different. Um, and I think this is about us as a community saying that if we are going to be fiscally responsible, then we do that collectively. And if in the future there has to be reductions or cuts or things like that, then that's across the board. And we take that on together. And it's not eight people who have to feel that pain and feel that suffering. Um, and so I, I, right there, I completely agree that this shouldn't have happened last minute, this shouldn't have happened in an email. And that, you know, we have a responsibility to take care of everyone in the city. And taking care of everybody also includes having to, uh, make reductions. But this is going to result in a cut in services to our residents and that is our priority as well.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Denham. Councilor Peak?
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, so I'm okay with the idea out of respect for the employees that asked us to, to continue this until, uh, the next meeting. I'm okay with continuing it, um, to the eighteenth. I, I do think that, um, I, I mean, I, I'm hopeful that that's, that it works. And if, if there's not a resolution, but they come to a resolution later, I, I, this counselor, I like, I'd be comfortable, uh, talking about an appropriation later to, uh, to, to, uh, to correct that if that was a conclusion that the administration, the unions were able to come to. I am with Counselor Riley on the fact that on the eighteenth, I'll be voting for some budget. Like I, we're gonna need to pass something. If, if there's a way that we can come to an agreement, um, that would make me happy. I don't want to see anyone, uh, put in a worse situation. But just one way or another, we're gonna have to vote for something. And I, I'm just, that, that's sort of where I am. I do, the, one thing that Councilor Riley, you said that I, I just want to slightly push back on in a polite way is that, uh, you're saying that this shouldn't have happened until the last minute. And I don't fully think that it did. You know, we were aware of these reductions a while ago and they were a co- a topic of, of conversation throughout our deliberations. They were the reason why we had a, a two to one vote. And that was a thing that we were able to have a respectful dialogue about. And, and that's where we landed. I think that what happened is that we received an email saying, would this council be willing to, uh, continue this because we are in the middle of a conversation? We're hoping that in two weeks, we're gonna be in a different place. And I think that I, just to be respectful to our union workers, I, I, I'd, I'd be happy to do that. And, and I hope that they come to some sort of resolution that at least some folks can feel happy about. But I don't think that this happened all of a sudden. It was, it's something that we've been discussing, it's something that's been on our radar. And they've come forward to say, could we use a, we could use a little bit more time? We have a little bit more time, we don't have a lot more time, but we have a couple of weeks. So I don't have an op- I don't have any opposition to that. Just one thing I would like to say is that before we take, uh, any motion to continue, which does seem to be, if I'm reading the room right, the way that this council wants to, uh, go, I, I want to just say, is anyone proposing any sort of cuts? Nope? Okay. All right. Then, because just if there was something that we were discussing, it would be better to hear about it now than in two weeks where suddenly somebody brings something up and somebody has a question and we don't have, if we're gonna have these two weeks, we should use them, right? If anyone's thinking about doing any, any budget stuff, use these two weeks to think it through and ask the appropriate questions because we don't want to be here in two weeks being like, oh, wait, we can't come to a conclusion tonight. That being said, unless there's anything that anyone else, sure.
I, I just would like to kind of have like a wrap up statement before you.
Yeah.
And also, since we are in a public hearing, I should allow the public a chance, an opportunity to speak as well. But I think, you know, I'd like to address two things here. I think number one is the, the accusation of an open meeting law violation, uh, which I disagree with. I think that this was, um, all of the budget hearings that we've had so far advertised the exact same way tonight's public hearing was advertised. And we had these same discussions at all four of those meetings. Um, and so I think that that, you know, a counselor asking department heads about staffing cuts that are part of their budget, you know, this is related to, you know, the, the knowledge that we have that sixty-five thousand dollars was over budgeted for the retirement and that, you know, that that money is gonna sit where it is until it becomes free cash and then transferred over into free cash. And then, you know, it's like the counselor is making a suggestion that maybe some of that money could be used for this. So I think it's all within the purview of, um, and, and I would also suggest that the money that, you know, we're gonna have to, uh, spend talking to lawyers about, uh, an open meeting law violation would be much better used giving to our employees. And, and allowing them to maybe potentially, um, you know, make up some of this difference because that honestly is just money wasted. We don't need any more wasted money in this budget or in any budget. Uh, we need more pragmatic approach and a more collaborative approach. So I, I disagree with that piece. Um, and we'll see what happens with that. Uh, as far as the continuation, I'm fine with the continuation. I just want a, a couple logistical things. We need to make sure that we have all hands on deck. Some of these votes require a two-thirds majority. We need to make sure that we have, you know, counselors that are going to be available for this next meeting and that we don't have any, you know, I, I feel like we should have all hands on deck for that. Uh, and then we also have to acknowledge, we're gonna have to buckle our seat belts because this is not gonna be a short meeting. Um, we have a lot of supplemental appropriations, it is going to be a long night. So just everybody be prepared for that, which I think is, you know, it's good to psychologically prepare ourselves for that. Make sure you eat dinner before you come. But that being said, you know, I, I think those are, uh, just a couple of the things that I wanted to say before we, um, wrap this up. But I, I do, if I am reading the room, I think that this is gonna be, um, you know, a continuation of the public hearing until our next meeting, six fifteen. Um, and I'll allow Counselor Peak to make that motion. But I do feel like it's important for anybody in the public that would like to speak to this um, in any way, shape or form, um, related to the budget. You, you please, you can step to the podium, you can have three minutes. You would just need to state your name and address for the record.
Nicola Chappell, one, two, three, East Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. I will politely disagree with the president on open meeting law and any legal fees that will go along with that. In fact, when we're talking about a public process, it deserves and needs to be fully vetted and that the legal fees are what they are. And I don't think it's in the public interest to decide not to file a complaint or, or dismiss a complaint because of legal fees. This is an open meeting law violation as I see it. I have a right to file that as does any member of the public. And the city, one way or another, will have to defend it. Maybe it involves legal fees, maybe it doesn't. A second issue I'd like to bring forward is that the matters that were discussed tonight and the type of questions that were asked of department heads are clearly those to be asked at the table of negotiation in good faith. And I feel that the questions that were answered and the way, I mean, the questions as they were asked were to make a case for an issue this council has no control over, which are one, negotiations and two, spending of money. And I find that that will be also, we will be filing. I also am worried about what in negotiations, they are confidential as they are ongoing. And I have serious questions about the other side of this table and asked me if that was broken, that confidentiality, when they came and made their case. We have worked with other unions, they have come and made their case and they have been very specific and mindful of that confidentiality clause under the National Labor Relations Board. And I remind that as far as negotiations, we have known about this issue and have gone back and forth with this union for some time. This is not new, which also concerns me of what the union is doing as they're talking outside of the confidentiality as we get closer to budget time to make a case while they are waiting for us to clearly go by free our impact bargaining sessions. Any delay, cease and desist was on both sides as far as getting their union organizer as well as our legal counsel to the table to do those negotiations. This is not a last minute thing and it has nothing to do with our, my proposed budget or our, per, our joint, budget procedures as they are laid out in the Home Rental Charter as well as the city council rules and the process that are in our financial policies. And I, I feel, again, not personal, but it is very difficult to sit here as a member of the public, but also the mayor, to just sit here with, with no ability to respond at all as a part of the budget process. And I am even questioning the words I've said so far, but feel that the department heads and quite honestly, the employees deserve a full public vetting. I disagree with the way this council approached. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Kathy Wazinski, Overlook Drive. I wanted to thank the counselor for bringing the attention to the discrepancies in the budget and the problem of our lowest paid staff or some of our lower paid staff getting such reductions. I also had a question that seems really confusing to me and maybe, um, it's because I'm having a blonde moment, but we have a mayor's office that has an FTE of two but has a personnel line of a hundred and eighty-two thousand. The mayor's salary is only about ninety thousand, so we have a secretary that doesn't work forty hours a week that makes ninety-two thousand dollars a year? That seems excessive given that she's now getting a three thousand dollar raise. I think it's inappropriate that other staff are receiving cuts. I know last year when we were having the budget discussions, I raised the concern about some of our lowest paid staff in the sewer department not having appropriate salaries. I think that is still an issue. And I really appreciate the public discussion about these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody online? Okay, Counselor Peak. I think we could probably.
Sure. Yes, I will make a motion to continue this hearing until our next meeting. That'll be June eighteenth at six fifteen in these chambers.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary Ann?
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatsick.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell. Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So this public hearing will be continued until our next meeting. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
So.
Second.
Felicia Jatsick.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell. Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
I have a question. Point of order.
Counselor Kuzinski.
It seems contradictory to be closing the public hearings when
we continue it.
When we continued it, so we've continued it. Should we have a vote on closing?
Closing this particular section of the public hearing, I think.
This section?
Yeah.
That's probably a better way of saying it. I just wanted to be sure we didn't make any
No, we did.
open, any violations of protocol.
Let's hope not. And we are to the point of our agenda where it is mayor's communications. I don't know, mayor, if you have anything else to... Okay, you have communicated. Thank you. And so that brings us to reports from standing committees. Counselor Peak, I think you might have a couple things to.
I do have a couple things. So we met.
Did you bring your long voice today?
I sure hope we did. Last year, when we did this, I had terrible allergies. And I thought I was gonna die by the end. So this year, I took my Flonase. I think I'm in a good position to do it. So we met last week to discuss the budget, which we just discussed. We'll be meeting next week at five-thirty in Conference Room One to discuss a whole lot of appropriations, which I'm about to read in first reading. So if somebody sees me do something wrong, let me know. But otherwise, yeah. I'm gonna do this as one motion because we've got three people online. If we do this as a roll-call vote for all like twenty of these, we're gonna be here till like ten at night.
Yes.
So this will be a single motion to move these appropriations to the Finance Committee, do the first reading, and to schedule a public hearing for all of them for six fifteen in these chambers on June eighteenth, which is going to be a real doozy of a meeting. All right, let's get started. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings to be transferred to FY-25 Water SCADA Program. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the design and installation of upgrades for the Water Department SCADA system. The city IT department has successfully secured one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in grant funding from the Community Compact IT Grant Program towards the total project cost of two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. The current system is approximately thirty years old, obsolete, and in need of replacement. Okay. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings to be transferred to FY-25 Wastewater Treatment Plant RES pumps. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the installation of the new return and waste pumps and associated valving at the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be completed as part of the upcoming aerator replacement project, which results in a significant cost savings. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: three-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, three-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars to be transferred to FY-25 Love Field Pump Station Improvements. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the construction and repair of upgrades at the Love Field Street Wastewater Pumping Station. The construction will include replacement of the discharge piping release valve and installation of a bypass pumping connection to allow for a larger rehabilitation to be completed on this station in the future. Other supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested: two-million-four-hundred-thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, two-million-four-hundred-thousand dollars, to be transferred to Fund Eighty-Four General Stabilization, one-million-eight-hundred-thousand dollars. Fund Eighty-Five General Stabiliz, or Capital Stabilization, five-hundred-thousand dollars. Fund Eighty-Eight Tax Rate Stabilization, one-hundred-thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund general stabilization, to provide stability in the current environment, to fund capital stabilization, to meet capital needs, and to fund the tax rate stabilization to reduce the impact of debt exclusions on the tax rate. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested: nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-nine dollars and sixty cents to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Fund Eighty-Seven Cannabis Stabilization. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund cannabis stabilization to cover deficit. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested: forty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and five cents to be transferred from PEG Access Account, to be transferred to PEG Access Account. The amount requested will be used for the following, this is an interdepartmental transfer, by the way. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to give approval to spend from the PEG Access Receipts Reserved Account for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement. Supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-two dollars to be transferred from School Workers' Comp, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. City Workers' Comp, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars to be transferred to School Workers' Comp, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. City Workers' Comp, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: vote to pay prior fiscal year bill out of FY-25 budget, covers Workers' Comp Audit Adjustment Invoice for prior fiscal year FY-24, policy period July first, 2023 to June thirtieth, 2024, MIA insurance. Supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, to be transferred to Thirty-two-B Health and Dental Insurance. And then there's a number of accounts, account, I'm not gonna read the numbers, but they're all for sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred each to these various unnamed numbered accounts. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to cover the remaining health and dental insurance premiums for May, June, and July FY-2025. Supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: twenty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars to be transferred from School Liability, ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. City Liability, ten-thousand-ninety dollars. To be transferred to School Liability, ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. City Liability, ten-thousand-ninety dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: vote to pay prior fiscal year bills out of FY-25 budget, covers liability adjustment and deductible invoices for prior fiscal year FY-2024, policy period July first, 2023 to June thirtieth, 2024, MIA insurance. Supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: fifteen-thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to IOD Fire Medical Expenses. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: covering remaining fire department injured-on-duty medical expenses for FY-2023 billing incurred after fiscal year closing. Okay, this is a supplemental appropriation. There we go. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-and-ten dollars and fourteen cents to be transferred from Police Base Pay, eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and four cents. Police Overtime, fifty-seven-thousand dollars. Police Sick Time, thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Police Unused Vacation, ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Oh, police. I guess this is, huh. Police Auto Expenses. Five-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Oh, no. So it's transferred from Free Cash to those things. Sorry, the formatting on this one is a little bit different. Sorry. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to cover the contractual payout of, for retirement of Staff Sergeant Brian Ross, to cover the shortfall in the FY-25 overtime as a result of one officer on maternity leave, three officers on paid parental leave, one officer that attended twelve weeks of K-9 training, one officer on military deployment for nine months, two officers with monthly weekend military training, one officer assigned to field training and minimal special officers available due to Police Reform Bill and post-re requirements, as well as a new hire that may need to attend the police academy to cover the cost of anticipated auto supply repair expenses for the remainder of FY-25. Request is hereby made, this is supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and forty-five cents to be transferred from Free Cash, three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and forty-five cents to be transferred to Snow. Snow Overtime, twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Rentals, ninety-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Snow Chemical, thirty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and four cents. Salt, one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. Snow School Plowing, thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Travel/Meals, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The Department of Public Works has experienced a shortfall of three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and forty-five cents in the snow and ice removal budget for FY-25. We are requesting funds to be transferred from Free Cash to cover this deficiency. Here's another police one. Supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: two-thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Animal Control Professional Services. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes: to cover shortfalls in the FY-25 ACO Professional Services as a result of increased costs to share animal control and animal shelter services with the city of Westfield. The monthly fee has increased to one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents effective November eighteenth, 2024. There are also additional monthly fees, which can include boarding and medical fees, costs per call of service, rabies testing and associated shipping costs, count on inspection fees, et cetera. All right, we've got supplemental appropriation. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars. To be transferred to Ambulance Supplies, eleven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Miscellaneous and professional technical, miscellaneous professional and technical services, three-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes: cover costs of EMS supplies for remainder of the year and costs for fire, police, and dispatch on peer support network fee. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: forty-thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, forty-thousand dollars. To be transferred to Fire Medical, two-thousand dollars. Vehicle repairs, twenty-five-thousand dollars. Fire Equipment, seven-thousand dollars. Fire Education and Training, three-thousand dollars. Building Equipment, three-thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: Fire Medical, costs of onboarding two new firefighters for medical evaluations. Vehicle repairs, costs for unanticipated repairs on fire apparatus. Fire Equipment, costs for annual service on hose testing, five-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And Extraction Equipment, one-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Fire Education Training. Contractual requirements for reimbursement, personnel for tuition. Building Equipment, annual service on exhaust removal systems, one-thousand-five-hundred, and Vision Twenty-One Systems, one-thousand-five-hundred. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: twenty-eight-thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, twenty-eight-thousand dollars. To be transferred to two accounts. They both start zero-zero-one-nine-one-two-one. The first one ends five-six-zero-one. And the second one ends five-seven-four-four. They're both for fourteen-thousand dollars. Amount requested will be used for the following purpose: funding school and city Medicare expenses for FY-2025. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested: three-hundred-thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, three-hundred-thousand dollars. To be transferred to School Intergovernmental, three-hundred-thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to cover deficits in the School Department for unanticipated special education tuition and transportation expense accounts.
Second.
We've got a second.
Can you repeat the third one?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm moving those to Finance. Counselor Peak.
I just wanna say, for the benefit of any public watching, that might have seemed really confusing. We just got our Free Cash certified, which came back to a substantial surplus. So now we have to decide how, if at all, to spend that money. And various departments have various cost overruns or unanticipated expenses that they've incurred over the course of the fiscal year. So now they come to us to present those ideas on how we can spend down some of the surplus. And anything that doesn't get spent will probably just get sent to stabilization.
And I also would add that, and thank you for that explanation, that this budget that we continued our hearing on, it would be a budget that would have these expenses upfront, budgeted. And we wouldn't necessarily have end-of-the-year appropriations like this with the newer kind of version of the budget.
That's my hope.
So I think that's one of the points.
Yes. It's not just for me.
Right. Thanks, Counselor Peak. Mary Ann?
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell. Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatsick.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I believe there is one more finance piece of new business. It's the request from the Police Department for creation of a donation account supporting mindfulness and meditation in PD and FD. So you could just move that to. mindfulness and meditation in PD and FD, so you could just move that to finance if you feel so inclined.
Yes, absolutely. I will also, uh, I don't know, yes, I'll move that to finance as well.
Second. Good, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mary Ann?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell. Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Okay, uh, motion passes, and so that, thank you, Counselor Peak.
That concludes...
That's, yes. Um, and, uh, so Counselor Terrell is not here for public safety, so I will just say that, uh, we have no report this evening. Um, and appointments, Counselor Smith?
No report this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Ordinance, Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing new to report, um, but we do have two upcoming meetings. Uh, one for, uh, June ninth at six P M in Conference Room One, and we'll be discussing the, um, short-term rental ordinance. And June tenth, um, at five P M, we will continue the conversation, um, regarding the, uh, housing partnerships, zoning, um, proposals. Um, I don't, sorry, I, I, I'm on my iPad, so I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I believe we have a couple of, um, dates that we need to extend by ninety days.
I can, I can read them for you if you'd like.
Yeah, that, that I would appreciate that.
Uh, so the review, uh, request to review residency requirements for memberships on committees, uh, uh, ninety-day extension, um, review of affordable fair housing partnerships, zoning ordinance recommendations, ninety-day extension, and request to review zoning ordinance amendments, short-term rentals. Again, ninety-day extension. Uh, we can just put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Mary Ann?
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell. Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Any other updates, Counselor Denham?
That's everything we have to offer, Counselors, evening.
Uh, thank you. And as I review this, I'm just going to, uh, take responsibility for the fact that I neglected to ask for an extension for traffic and pedestrian safety and public safety, so I would, in the form of a motion, request a ninety-day extension on that item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mary Ann?
Okay, Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell. Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, property, Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, property is not met, and, uh, I think we probably won't meet until the new, next fiscal year, at which point we're going to pick up this, uh, issue around, uh, uh, flags on public property, which will need a ninety-day extension, so I will make a request for that now in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mary Ann?
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Okay, motion passes, um, and I believe is that it? Counselor Peak? Okay, perfect. So Rules and Government Relations, uh, yep. Oh, we do have a piece of new business for property.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. It's, um, right at the top.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. So I will also move, uh, the, I would make a motion to, uh, move the request from the Conservation Commission for a conservation restriction on, uh, three eighty-five Main Street Cestral Land, uh, Trust, Inc., uh, to new business.
Second.
To property.
To property.
To, to property.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mary Ann?
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Peg Coniff. JT Terrell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and one more thing.
Yeah.
Um, it actually did occur to me, the Conservation Agent did reach out saying that this item, now that you mention it, is a little bit time-sensitive, so we should probably meet next week. Um, I'll be in ti- I, I think, would, would Tuesday work for you, Counselor?
Sure.
Would that work for you, Counselor Coniff?
What date is that?
Tuesday, the, uh, I don't know, six days from now? The tenth?
The tenth.
Yep, Tuesday the tenth.
Ordinance meeting then.
Yep.
Ordinance, we have an ordinance meeting?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's do five thirty. Okay. Yeah, sorry to do that on the fly.
It's okay.
Just...
You did it nicely.
It is time-sensitive, so thank you.
Good job.
Um, okay, uh, Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Kuzinski.
We did not meet, uh, I just wanted to be sure, Mary Ann, that we had the extension on the mayor's compensation matter. That was one of the, I, all the, I, all the ones that I believe that Counselor Derby had mentioned. If that's the case, then, um, we're covered. No further report.
Okay. Perfect. Um, well, that takes care of our new business, old business. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. All of those, oh, I'm sorry. Mary Ann? It happens.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Connie Denham.